Choice after graduation. So instructional programming wise, you can see we had over ninety, we had ninety-six students participate in our Lewis and Clark Tech School Program as well as students who participated in our CAPS Program and our Early College Program. That's a real big focus for us. The PLTW graph will show you the same thing. We're really looking at getting our students involved in those programs. And you can see those numbers as well. Attendance I mentioned earlier, you can see we dipped last year just a tiny bit from eighty-eight point one to eighty-seven point two. A couple of other things, I've mentioned our four-year graduation rate. We did increase this year, so we were very excited to break the ninety-six percent increase. You can see where our graduates go. Our ACT score went up, which is a great. And our SEAL by Literacy Program, which you know we started a couple of years ago, increased as well by thirteen students this past year. So we're really proud of those numbers. I'm going to turn it over to Sherri Bertrand, who's our Director of Assessment, to talk through this year's assessment plan.
Good evening. So we have to give the assessment plan update every year. The assessment plan itself has not changed a lot this year. One thing we did add to it, though, is the assessment matrix. This is for you all, this is for the teachers to really see where all the assessments fall at the different grade levels. The one that we are focused on the most right now is really our I-Ready Diagnostic Assessment as well as our Fuentes and Pennell Running Record Assessment, because those are local assessments that we can see on a regular basis to really monitor students, how they're doing, where we need to help them with instruction, and really move them forward. So that is our big focus with assessment this year. So something we had to do this year, and Megan talked to you about it with our level plans, is really think about assessment. And we had to change. It has to be a little bit of a paradigm shift, because our kids have missed so much instruction. So we want to make sure that when we do give assessments, that it's timely, that it provides timely, actionable feedback, so we can really adjust our instruction on a daily basis, so we can meet the needs of our students. We have to make sure that they're high quality. This really measures what students know and are able to do, so we're not just testing to test. It has to have a purpose. The next is making sure it's efficient. And so making sure that we do not over-test or over, just to keep testing to see where they're at, we have to make sure that we're giving them the instruction and then the high-quality assessment. The next one that we really spoke to, and we've worked a lot with our virtual teachers, is fair and equitable. So making sure that the assessments that they're, they're, they're able to be taken by our students, and it's not only just fill-in-the-blank or multiple choice, that really looking at performance assessments and how they can actually apply what they are learning in class. So it's not if they're home, they can't Google the information, they're actually having to apply the information. And then, as I've said, and Megan has said as well, it's tied to improved learning. So that is our constant focus, that it has to be, it has to provide next steps for teaching. Something that we're very excited about is we are launched, we have launched Illuminate. And basically Illuminate is, it's a streamlined solution that is a, there's an assessment bank as well as an assessment toolkit that helps us not only assess students, but really helps us analyze the data, get fast data where we don't have to, teachers don't have to spend hours and hours and hours analyzing it. It does it for us, so when they meet as collaborative teams, they can really get to the heart of the instruction that they need to plan and focus on. So it's something that we're very excited about, and we have been rolling it out to, to schools during their planning time and during collaboration time. So it's very exciting. And next, I will introduce Greg Lawrence, Director of Technology.
Good evening. I would like to share regarding the technology program evaluation. First, just as Dr. Strazinski had shared, that we, all of our goals are based off of the CSIP, which was written last year. And as you'll notice throughout our proposed goals, they're all based off of those goals. Two in particular relating to teaching and learning, but also related to community, culture, and safety. Last year, we had about six goals that we put, that we had set for our team, where we, as part of those goals, continue to provide updated, purposeful technology, ensuring that our staff, students have technology that is updated and ready to roll, so they have access to it inside of their classrooms or at home. Provide high-quality professional development, so really supporting our teachers, supporting our staff, our administrators, our faculty, to ensure that they understand how various technologies work and support them in their instruction. We also had a goal last year to investigate and implement innovative teaching practices, which we're constantly doing. As you know, technology is always evolving and advancing, so we always want to ensure that we are adapting our teaching practices to be innovative along with the technology. We also wanted to encourage creativity and engagement with the technology. And one of the ways that we were actually able to do that last year, even in the midst of a pandemic where we are at home, was we were able to take our film festival that we normally hold in-person, but we were able to move that online through Facebook Premiere, and actually had a great amount of our community participate in those videos. But just one example of how we were able to engage our students in creativity. We also are beginning to research, design, and implement digital citizenship, ensure that our students are safe and understand what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, and how do we interact online through collaboration and the various tools that we have access to. And then the last part, which really, once again, as many of these goals, they really kind of incorporate to many of the things that were already going on in the district, really how technology continued to support that. And that's with our flexible learning options. And not only with furniture, but we're able to implement technology into our classrooms that allow our teachers to be flexible, not tethered to a wire in a corner, but they're able to move around. And that also has been proven itself also through our Virtual Academy, where we're able to support our teachers through the flexible learning opportunities that brings. So this year, we have multiple proposed goals that we are actually very much already working towards. The first thing is continuing to move our one-to-one access initiative, which we currently have from sixth grade through twelfth grade down to our elementary grades. So we're actually in the process right now of piloting and looking at what does one-to-one look like in our elementary schools, specifically with kindergarten, first, and second grade. We're also looking for a way and have a goal to develop and implement a single sign-on system, which sounds kind of nerdy, but basically just to ensure that our students are, have one single platform to access all of their digital resources that we use across the district. We're going to continue to support our teachers and staff and administrators with professional learning related to the technologies that we have access to in our district, and support them in teaching and learning and student engagement. And then we will also be utilizing our instructional tech coaches to work with our teachers on best practices. How do we use the technologies that we have to provide great, high-quality instruction for our teachers and our students? And then lastly, we are continuing to research, develop, and implement new digital well-being resources. If you'll notice, the previous goal spoke on digital citizenship, but we're really speaking on the well-being of our students, ensuring that they're safe, they're secure, and that they are able to have a great, a great well-being in our, in our district and when they grow up. Some highlights I'd like to share. As I mentioned previously, the expansion of the One Access Initiative to our sixth grade, we started at the beginning of our school year, which now, we, once again, we have one-to-one from sixth grade all the way up through twelfth grade. The Wentzville School District was featured in Staples Magazine and School Profile, highlighting some of the flexible technology options that we have in our classrooms. One of our instructional tech coaches presented at a national conference called ISTI. It's an instructional technology conference that is a global, and he led one of his sessions on technology for younger learners. Also, as previously mentioned, we had our fourth annual Film Festival. And once again, that premiered on Facebook, and we had multiple weeks of that in April and May. And we're excited for our fifth annual Film Festival to be held this year also. And we're already planning for that to be digital also. And once again, it's just if you have not had the opportunity to watch some of those videos, our students are beyond creative, and it is great to see their passions displayed through our Film Festival. Also, we were able to upload and upgrade many of our network resources to support our teachers and our staff and our students over the summer, and continue to do that throughout the year. I always like to end with what I like to call fun with numbers, and just to show you kind of how technology is being used in our district. So this year, and let me actually pause on that, just to show you kind of the, how much those digital resources are being used. Last school year, so if we look at the entire school year, we created four-point-five million documents inside of Google Drive, which is how we create documents, spreadsheets, presentations. This year, since July first, we have created four-point-five million documents. So our students are definitely utilizing the resources that they have to continue to showcase their learning in their classrooms. Another one, and once again, I'm going to reference last school year. Last school year, we created, we, our team resolved over six thousand work orders as part of our district. Just to put that in perspective, since the July one, we have actually surpassed how many work orders we completed in one year, and we have completed that in six months. You can see, technology is absolutely being used by all of our students and staff, and we work tremendously hard to ensure that our students have access and our teachers have access to those devices. Another one, this is a pretty fun one, and that is Google Meet, which is our video conferencing software that we utilize for virtual, and when our students were hybrid and learning virtually, we held over one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand video meet conferences since July one. Matter of fact, when I looked the other day, within thirty days, we've held over twenty-five-thousand Google Meet conferences, from meetings virtually inside of our district to holding instruction for our virtual teachers outside or during the day. And then our last one, we have distributed over twelve-thousand Chromebooks in our district to support our virtual and in-person students. We just, actually, two weeks ago, had two thousand more Chromebooks show up, and we are in the process of getting those ready and rolled out, which would move our fleet of Chromebooks up to fourteen-thousand Chromebooks. So just putting that in perspective, we have fourteen-thousand Chromebooks, but seventeen-thousand students. So our team works incredibly hard. We have a very passionate team that wants to ensure that our students have exactly what they need, our faculty have exactly what they need, so they continue to learn, no matter whether at home, in-person, or hybrid. And that is it for the teaching and learning. So I get, I get to say thank you? Thank you? I'm here. So are there any questions?
No question. Just thank you for all that you guys are doing to make sure kids are learning. Appreciate it.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Lawrence, if you could please. Few meetings ago, we approved something to help eliminate our downtime. Has that worked for us within the district?
Yeah, so we, that is actually going into effect. We're doing a test tomorrow with the company to ensure that everything is set up correctly, and that's when our official start date will be with them. So we have used the past few weeks to get everything set up and working with them.
And then secondly, on our elementaries, I noticed some of them are one-to-one, some are, are less numbers than that. In this year, and help me if I'm, what I was hearing right, in some cases, that a family with three students at home in the elementary may only have one Chromebook, would that have been an accurate statement, or?
So many families always had the opportunity. At first, we did limit to one Chromebook, but once again, if there is multiple students in the family, we always have them, they have the ability to request additional Chromebooks, so we could support them in their learning.
And what advantage is it to our students all the way from kindergarten through twelve, if we was one-to-one? Is there, what is the benefits of that? And what's the anticipated cost to get there?
So our, you know, the added benefits is access, that every student has access to a device, every student has access to the internet, every student has access to the resources across our district. And, you know, that's one of those benefits for it. Also, that our teachers, many times right now, they're checking out carts, and they're having to wait for another cart to be available to use, and this provides all of our students with access a hundred percent of the time. So when we look at cost, you know, looking at our numbers, you know, as you can see, we are very much one-to-one when we get close to that, but there's the sustainability piece of that. So we have to, you know, a technology has an expiration date, so we have to maintain those devices, stay updated, and maintain to work. So, you know, to, to put a cost on that off the mind, it would, I would have to get back with you on exactly what that is, but, you know, ensuring that our devices are updated, you know, we would have to develop a cycle, which is what we have at our secondary level. We would also have to establish that at our elementary level to ensure that all devices are sustainable, and then, you know, have the upgrade cycle that is needed to continue to maintain this.
Thank you. Questions for the first presenter? If I could, please.
Yes. Hello.
Somebody else has some questions, they can go. My question, as we talked about testing, is this also considered, as you're talking about testing and assessment, does this include our finals for semesters?
Yes, we look at any internal assessments, so we'll track how our students did on finals this semester as well as next semester, yes.
And as I'm sure you're aware of, that we did not have no final in the fall of nineteen. The spring, there was no question, we had a final about that. I have heard, would this be correct or not, that some students would give the option, once again, is to not take finals, that it would not improve or improve, it could improve, but would not hurt their grade?
So we have always provided teachers with the ability to make decisions about if students needed to show what they know on a certain assessment. So yes, some of our high school teachers base it on the grade that they have, or the percentage that they have, if or not they have to take the final, but that has not changed.
No, that's not true.
No.
Then, then my question is, without that testing, and is how value is that to understand what achievements the students have made? And what is our, how does it help our evaluation of our staff as to their presentation of materials that they were supposed to be distributing?
Do you mean in regards to finals or in regards to state assessments?
I guess, let's talk about the finals, I guess.
Okay.
Or anything that we would have missed out on through this, in a sense?
So finals are just one small assessment among a slew of assessments that our teachers give. So they utilize all kinds of assessments throughout a semester to track student progress. So the fact that we didn't have a final last spring might have impeded some ability to say how a student ended at the end of the year, but they're doing assessments all the time. So they're able to make those adjustments. The state assessments tell us a different, a variety of things. So typically, our in-district common assessments are about our right-now learning, how we're performing on the standards that we have just taught you. Our state assessment is more of a global view. It looks at all of the standards for the year, and it helps us to understand how students are grasping and holding on to that information. So since we didn't have that, we don't have that data to analyze, which does provide us with some information, but we put a lot more stock in our local and district assessments and our teachers' interpretation of their students' achievement than we do our state assessments. They serve a purpose that we appreciate, but they are nothing in comparison to our district assessments.
Okay, just, if I could continue a few more. I don't know if, if you have heard, it was in the paper today, and it was on YouTube that the Wentzville School District was somewhat attacked at Jeff City as far as our presentation to our students through this. There's also a House, either House Bill fifty-five or Senate Bill fifty-five pushing charter schools within the Wentzville District, as well as that person talking in front of the Education Department, discussing vouchers, tax credits, and other means of receiving education for students within our Wentzville School District. Can you tell me what effect this would have on our public education system if vouchers, tax credits, or charter schools would come about?
Well, I would say that anything that takes funding away from our district and funnels funding to a different school or district hurts us. It hurts our students, and it hurts the programs that we're able to provide them.
And I guess my point is, there is, is this gives us the time to be under attack as a public school system, that we need to make it as strong as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, moving on.
Conference of School Counseling Program Evaluation?
Hi, I'm Kristy Van Ronson, the Lead School Counselor for the Wentzville School District, and this is Chris Turner, our Lead Educational Support Counselor. So we're excited to be here tonight to talk about our comprehensive school counseling program review. So information provided in the program review was gathered by school counselors and educational support counselors collaboratively. We have had a year like no other, and it has helped our school counselors and ESCs to collaborate and come together to support our students, staff, and families in a strong way that we're really proud of. We are so proud of the partnerships we have formed. It is rewarding to see how our partnership has positively impacted student support and success across the district. The program summary, all students in the Wentzville School District are provided with a comprehensive school counseling program. This is accomplished through collaborative relationships and meaningful services that empower students to reach their fullest potential. We are successful when students become socially responsible individuals who are compassionate, resilient, and resourceful in our ever-changing world. As you may remember from last year, we have started working to formalize all of the amazing work that our ESCs and school counselors are doing in the Wentzville School District, and to highlight what students should expect to receive from us from the early age, from the age of early childhood, all the way through their senior year in high school. School counselors and ESCs have too many responsibilities on their plates to fully explain how we support students in schools. Some of those examples are highlighted on this slide, such as providing individual and group counseling, classroom lessons, prevention education lessons. Classroom lessons are presented by the school counselors, and we partner with outside agencies to present those prevention education lessons. Crisis intervention, ongoing PD for teachers to better understand the social, emotional needs of our students. We participate in building problem-solving teams. We provide staff support. This area has grown a lot this year due to new concerns in the area of COVID-19 and the growing mental health crisis in our country. And we provide continuous support and partnership with outside agencies using technology and other strategies to reach our students, who are both in-person learning as well as virtual learning, staff members, and families in need. Okay, I'm sorry. One area that we will not allow to fall short is our dedication to teach prevention lessons to our students who are both virtual and in-person. COVID has thrown a curveball to all educators, but we are so proud of how creative we have been to learn how to continue to reach students as well as address student needs as they present so differently as compared to a typical school year. We love being the support system for our students, staff members, and families, especially during the pandemic, when more mental health needs tend to arise, and our services are really in high demand.
As with every other facet of the Wentzville School District, the ESCs and school counselors have had an opportunity to evaluate, make changes, and challenge ourselves to improve in how we also meet the needs of students through this pandemic. Mary, can you click on? So I'd like to take this opportunity to share with you one of the ways in which we have accomplished this goal. So this is an example of a virtual counseling classroom that one of my ESCs, Katie Fisher over at Barfield Early Childhood Center, created. So many of the ESCs and the school counselors have created these. And as the students and parents explore these interactive counseling rooms, they'll find valuable information that we hope will help them continue to feel connected during a time when social distance has become an all-too-familiar concept. So if you click on Barfield, so walking kind of through this room, you'll see that each of her little visuals up there takes you to a different, different information about the school. There's Barfield. And then if you click on the picture of her, there's a bio about the counselor in the building. And then right next to that, where it says "Contact Me," is a way to get in touch with the counselor. And then that two-one line will show resources for families. And then over there on the bookshelf, there you go. This is a read aloud of different counseling books. And this example actually shows her, if you click that, Mary, you can see the counselor in the corner actually reading the book.
Hi, boys and girls.
As they're going through the story.
Today, I'm going to read you one of my favorite stories called "The Invisible Stream." It's about a set of twins named Liza and Jeremy.
And then my personal favorite, the mindfulness activities. So the tiny little counselor up in the corner. Thank you. This will take you to a calming room, where you can kind of go through and look at all the different activities that parents can do with kids. And if you click on the fish, I would love to end our presentation tonight by offering us a chance to take a minute and actually practice one of the mindfulness exercises that we're sharing with some of our youngest Wentzville School District students. So we're inhaling as he goes up and exhaling as he comes down.
You can actually do this with your mask on, and nobody even knows you're doing it. It's amazing. It'll relax your shoulders, make you feel good.
Thank you, Mary. And finally, on behalf of the ESCs and school counselors, we would like to thank you all for your continued support of our programs.
Any questions for these ladies? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is new business. First, medical clinic bids.
Yes, in the board package, you see a memo with the attached bid process in terms of documents themselves as it relates to a medical clinic. It's a one-year pilot that we would like to engage in. And I'm not sure where this rumor came from. There's not a purchase, let me go ahead and dispel this, there's no purchase of any adjacent or adjoining property for this particular piece that we're talking about when it comes to this particular clinic. I'm not sure where that came from, so I like to disarm rumor with actual facts. That's not a part of this. This is a unique opportunity for us to not only meet the needs of students, but also some staff members as well. And so I'm going to have Dr. LeBrot actually just address some of the factual components that relate to this clinic. This is something that we've discussed loosely for some time, and we're excited about this potential, and literally bring this before the Board of Education for consideration. Dr. LeBrot?
Awesome, thank you so much. Good evening, Jerry LeBrot. I'm going to begin by reviewing the memo and then just providing some anecdotal notes regarding what our vision is for this clinic and where we are right now. So in the memo, in collaboration with Mr. Angivine, the purchasing department issued a request for bid to establish a medical clinic for use by employees, employee families covered by the Wentzville School District Insurance Trust, and students enrolled in the district. Our research has indicated that this could be done at relatively little or no cost to the district. Bid requirements were advertised in the newspaper from December eighteenth to January eighth. Three vendors expressed interest, and two vendors toured our proposed facilities during a site visit. The only vendor to issue a bid was Mercy Clinic East Communities. We've attached the specifications, including the bid requirements for establishing and operating the clinic. The specs outline what is required by both our district and the vendor. Also attached to this proposal was the proposal received from the vendor. Mr. Angivine and I propose accepting this bid and moving forward with the development of a contract with Mercy Clinic East Communities. As far as anecdotal notes in regard to this, establishing a clinic has been a long-term goal of the district. We want to, we see, have seen an increased need displayed in our community in the last year, not only in healthcare, but mental health care. not only in healthcare, but mental health care as well, and the needs of the community, the staff, the students, the families. At this point in time, things really just happened to fall in place, and an opportunity was available. Additionally, we had some space at Pierce Hall that was available. Our main goal and vision is to increase and ease access to quality healthcare in a neutral setting. We want staff and families covered by the WSD insurance plan to have a quick place to drop by. Perhaps staff can drop by on their plan and come back and be back to teach their classes in time. Maybe they have trouble getting their child into a doctor, can't see a pediatrician until the next day, but they can quickly swing by after school and make an appointment. So the availability of appointments and the flexibility to get our staff in and out is a huge key there. Like I mentioned, the ease of access, ability to quickly return to work. And we hope that that would provide us with improved staff attendance as well. Not only are they able to go and come quickly, but that continued healthcare and then overall improved health. Additionally, for students, this of course would be optional. Our students would absolutely need parent consent to attend. And we would hope that our parents would be able to take their students to the clinic as a convenience to them. Of course, we know many families have established pediatricians, or they may swing by different take-care clinics on their way home or what's convenient for them. This is just another service that we want to offer our students and families in collaboration with Mercy. Again, we wanted to provide them with an option for quick access to appointments within the school day, and also quality care for all, including many of our students who don't have traditional access to healthcare or a means to do so. This is a payer-blind model. Mercy is a nonprofit business, and students would not be turned away due to their inability to pay. Also, they would take insurance, Medicare, or Medicaid, copays, things like that, as far as out-of-pocket payment as well. But Mercy does have programming for students who would be in need otherwise. This is a one-year pilot agreement with a potential to extend if it goes well in the first year. There is no initial startup cost or expense to the district. Mercy would be covering the construction, the renovation, all of the staffing. Right now, we have the space. It's available in Pierce Hall. The only thing that we would really look, the cost that we would be incurring, is to utilize a fraction of a custodial's evening run. The custodian's already there. We would not be adding to his or her hours. That's just one of the checklist items that he or she would cover during the day. Like I said, no staffing or operational cost on our end either. We would truly be in a partnership with Mercy. What's nice about the Pierce Hall lower level is that there's around-the-back access, and so it would provide some privacy. Additionally, we'd be able to wall off part of that entrance in the back so that there would be privacy from the actual school of Pierce Hall and people entering and exiting the building. We felt like that was important for it to be a neutral environment and people to feel comfortable going there. Again, as I mentioned, really the only, the only part that Wentzville School District would be in would be providing that space. And we made that very clear in our request for proposal, that those were our expectations. Mercy's made it very clear that this would be a partnership opportunity. They would hire a nurse practitioner and an HSA. Wentzville would be part of that in selecting those providers, but they would be Mercy employees. They would also be able to work in collaboration with a medical doctor who's based in Wentzville. He would not be based in our clinic, but they would be able to consult with him as needed. And we would actually be shooting for an August of 2021 start, so beginning of this coming school year. In addition, we have done some significant amount of research even before I was in this position and working with the Missouri Health Alliance and trying to figure out what would make a good clinic. What have other school districts across the state done? What happens in other states as well? And so we are not operating alone in partnership with Mercy without guidance from an outside party as well. They guide school districts in opening clinics all the time. They provide us with suggestions and feedback, and we're able to utilize that in partnering as we move forward. As I mentioned, we're working in full collaboration with Mercy. We would work together, determine what the need is, what hours would be, we'd be open, what days would we be open, and we would collaborate on the hiring of staff. So those are a few of the many details we've discussed thus far based on our RFP and bid proposal. Just wanted to highlight a couple of those questions that I knew that we may have. Thank you.
Any questions at this time?
I'm not really sure that I quite understand exactly why in the world do we need to have a clinic on our campuses. I, you know, we're so close to hospitals around here. I just, I don't understand this. The other thing that concerns me is the fact that you indicate here that it would be for the Wentzville School District employees and, but students? I don't like that idea at all. And how would that be? I mean, I guess I'm just curious about how you would have that attached, you know, are you saying that if a parent couldn't leave to take their child to the doctor, that they would go without their parent? I, I mean, it wasn't very well, I didn't see it explained here. So I'm thinking that I purposely am a little bit skeptical about all of that, to be honest. I know that I feel as though that if anyone needs a doctor, no one has ever denied service anywhere. Not to my, the best of my knowledge. So I appreciate your answer.
Absolutely. So in partnering with Mercy and wanting to bring something onto our campuses, we know that many times it's not easy to get into the doctor, or it may, you know, you may have to make an appointment that's not convenient to you. We would like to provide quick access to our staff to make an appointment right before work, right after work, perhaps on a lunch break or over a planned period, so that you can get in and get out. And when you have a narrowed group of people who are accessing those services, that allows more flexibility in scheduling, and they understand your school schedule, your work schedule, and are able to work with you to get in and out efficiently and effectively. And it's in a fairly well-located place, that many campuses are also located near Pierce Hall. And so the the commute to and from would not be much at all. Additionally, we have spoken with several different agencies who were references for Mercy that they've collaborated with in similar situations, some public entities and some private entities. And they both raved about the success it was for their employees, for their students, the ability to see an increase in attendance, and for people to get the healthcare they need. In this particular situation for students, we would be, this would be a situation where a parent would want to choose to take their child there. We may, you know, we may call a parent, and the nurse may say, you know, it looks like your student may have strep. We would suggest you maybe go get a strep test. Perhaps the parent could swing by the clinic on the way home, get a strep test for the student, and doesn't have to go home, make an additional appointment, and take a significant amount of time. We want to provide it as an opportunity, most definitely not as a mandate, just as an option for our families, a convenience care. Also, them being a payer-blind facility, that provides us with the opportunity for students who are uninsured or who are unable to pay to be able to receive the services they need when they may not seek healthcare elsewhere. We find that as students' health deteriorates, or if they're not receiving the basic services they need, their attendance is going to decline significantly, and thus their performance as well. Mental health will decline, physical health will decline. So we want people to know that there's a place that they can go and that they will be supported. And so that was one of the benefits of partnering with Mercy as well.
Was this something that was inquired of the teachers, our parents, our students? I don't understand what even stimulated this, as I said, because I don't, honestly, I find it difficult to even think that we would even have a medical center on our campus. I don't think that's something that, again, I guess if a, you know, somebody that was a responsible adult, but I don't like the idea specifically about students. And again, you know, I mean, if that's a possibility that they can't get their child in, I just don't know where that circumstance exists, quite truthfully.
I would say that around the country, there are significantly improved outcomes when there are clinics on campus and they're easily accessible. Additionally, there is need in each and every one of our buildings for students to see healthcare providers, and this would provide quick, easy, and affordable access pretty much instantaneously.
Do we have any other questions?
Just a comment. I guess I completely disagree with you, Director Garber. I don't know why we wouldn't provide more access to healthcare for our staff and our students. I don't understand why we wouldn't do that. I work in a district that has a clinic that is similar to this, and it's been phenomenal. I think Fort Zumwalt also has a clinic. I don't know how long they've had theirs, but I've heard nothing but positive about theirs also. And just working in a school every day, being around children, being around staff, how difficult it is sometimes to, to get what they need. I don't know why we wouldn't do this. It absolutely, honestly, it blows my mind that we just wouldn't even, that we wouldn't support this, especially as it being a partnership. It's not a cost to us. To me, I see it as a total benefit to our families, to our kids, to our teachers, to our staff. I don't know why we wouldn't support it.
I think the doctors in themselves, I mean, I know that there are people, I know people that make the appointment with their doctor, and they don't even go in. But they wait in their cars under this COVID circumstance. So I realize that we're here in school. I just, honestly, I don't really feel like the school campus is the place for a medical clinic. I mean, all of our, all of our employees have insurance that they're, that they're eligible for. I don't necessarily see that, you know, I guess my biggest concern is that of a child. How, if this was supposed to be for a convenience, then does that mean that a child is taken to, taken over there with no parent there? I mean, I don't understand that.
Director Garber.
I don't quite understand that, quite honestly, why we've included students in that.
Dr. LeBratt, when you speak to that parent piece, it's, I really want clarity on this component especially.
Absolutely. This would be parental consent. Parents would be, we would, we would, parents would be present at that appointment. They would be taking their child. They would be scheduling. Perhaps the nurse could say, hey, I think they have an appointment available. Do you want me to help facilitate the time? The parent would take the child. The parent would be there present, just as if a parent were to take a child to a doctor's appointment anywhere else in St. Charles County, stop by a Walgreens clinic, a CVS clinic on the way home. This would be a parent-participant type of situation. We would not mandate that any child or parent use our facility. It would just be an option for them.
Does anybody else have any other questions or discussion, or like to make a motion? Director Abbott?
Dr. LeBratt, can you speak more to the need in the community and why people that might not have insurance, this might benefit them and help those families?
Absolutely. I know we have need in each and every single one of our buildings. As we saw earlier, as we were doing recognitions earlier this evening, we were thanking the churches and the community partners that have worked with us in collaboration to meet the needs of our families. And I absolutely know that that need does not stop in the Christmas season. It extends year-round. It is extended to healthcare, particularly when children need checkups, well visits, things like that. Many times, families don't have access, or they may have to put things off due to expenses, circumstances, being insured, being uninsured, those types of things. And when we work with someone who's a nonprofit, and they are what is called payer-blind, they come in, they treat the patient without knowing their ability to pay. They're then billed. If, if they have insurance, they build insurance. If they're covered under Medicaid, they build that. If they can pay out of pocket, they're able to do that through the billing system. But in the end of the day, if that family cannot pay, they are still treated regardless. The child still receives access to that healthcare, and that is not at the expense of the district. That is, that is part of Mercy. That is part of who they are, and that would be a benefit of collaborating with that nonprofit.
Dr. Dewey spoke to her employer and what they have. St. Charles City has had this for years. I think they were the first in county. And I've been, actually, it's on this school campus. I've actually been inside of that clinic. They rave about it at that point, raved about it at that point in time, and it's still exceedingly successful. For us to have folks that could actually go for whatever the exam happened to be, or whatever the medical need happened to be, to literally do that during planned period or whatever it happened to be, and then to come back, to go from potentially a full-day sub, depending on what's going on with your doctor or your personal care provider in terms of scheduling, looking, whatever that looks like, to go from potentially losing out on a full-day sub to not missing out any work time at all is a significant value add, not only to the employee, but also to the school district as a whole. Dr. Hebbison, to put you on the spot, even though this is completely off the cuff, this would be at your location. Is there any feedback that you'd like to provide?
No, I would just echo what four members who said that. It is absolutely needed at a high school district, as we know, Pierce Hall, the Northridge School District, the Arthur School. We have kids there that do not have health insurance. So what happens to them is they don't get the medical needs that they need, and then we don't see them for a while because they're home.
Hey, Ben, will you come to the microphone?
Why, Mr. Hebbison's walking up here. Can I throw out a few questions? My first question then, I guess, would be what's our cost of improvements? Being as I see we have there, it has been established that it is at Pierce Hall. Will this have a separate entrance and completely segregated from anything with the school? And how are we going to be indemnified for any liability for any medical practice that's in our building possibly?
Yes, Director Shaper, I'm happy to answer those questions. We would be able to have a separate entrance and separate parking at the back of Pierce Hall. Mercy would be in charge of any renovation or construction that would occur. They have already come in, measured the area for the RFP in order to provide their bid. They have looked at like partial walls that they need to construct to make sure that there are two separate entities. Additionally, there would be signage, making sure that it is very clear that it is a Mercy clinic. Additionally, we would seek guidance from our legal team, as well as the Missouri Health Alliance, in ensuring that we had the proper procedures in place as far as liability is concerned. Additionally, we would look to our partners within the county and within the St. Louis area to see how they have collaborated as well in those areas to ensure that we had protection under the law.
I got a question. Is, this is just strictly going to be used for the staff and students? So not the students' parents, but just the staff and students? Okay?
Yes.
And Director Shaper, as far as the facility goes, what they needed really was a separate bathroom and then some kind of access to water. And we have a location in the basement of Pierce Hall that has exactly that. And so they will have to put up a couple of walls, and we want to do that because we don't want it to where if a teacher came over from another school, they would have to cross paths with a student, and we can provide that. I see it as just, actually just two walls and possibly an additional door. There'll be a waiting room. Then you'll enter a separate room. They'll have to put up some exam rooms. I think they're going to go with two at this point. And then they'll have everything available right there for them. There'll be somebody that will be there to kind of take the name, have you wait, a nurse practitioner. We met the doctor that will be, is from Wentzville, that will be working with this nurse practitioner. So pretty good fit at this point, as far as the facility goes. Again, you know, I'll just echo what you said. It is really needed for a lot of kids in the school district. They just don't have the access to the medical needs. They just don't have the access to the medical needs that they, they need. A lot of these kids do. A lot of parents are available to help these kids. I work with kids that don't have that parental support. And to be able to have that available, especially at Pierce Hall, will make all the difference in the world. Because what it's going to do is it's going to provide, it's going to make it then capable for these kids to be with us on a more regular basis. And then get the resources that they need while they're here. A lot of kids in the district do have parents that can get them to the doctor like you talked about. But there is a group that don't. And what this does is provides that service for them.
Mr. Sheldon, do you have a comment also?
I just wanted to add something from the elementary perspective, because we, we find ourselves at all levels, but especially the elementary levels, bending over backwards, trying to provide services to our students, whether it's having dentists come into the building, providing hearing screening, vision screenings, well checks, whatever we can do throughout the year to bring these, these people into our buildings to meet the needs of, of the younger students. We do that and we don't make a big production of that. We also have multiple occasions where our staff are working with other St. Charles County community partners to provide medical assistance with not just the students, but also their families, because they just don't know where to go. And oftentimes, that, that is requiring our counseling staff, our ESCs, our SSI folks, our principals to help facilitate even the transfer from school to a medical facility to, to seek those services. And from my perspective, this would open the opportunities to every single student in our district to truly get what they need. So that whenever they do come to school, they can focus on the learning and not have to focus on the, the toothache or the earache that, that they just don't know where to go for the assistance. So once we've identified with our clinics and our nurses at the elementary level, the middle school level, we can then talk through this with the parent and let them know that we have an opportunity that is as simple as, as driving a couple of minutes away from the school to have them looked at and have them taken care of versus the parent having to figure out if and when that they can figure out a means to get the care that their child needs. So it'll absolutely be a benefit for the staff. But for a lot of our students that we're trying to do everything we can so they can just focus on learning, I think it's going to be more impactful for them.
And we're, we could be in a really good partnership with Mercy because they can provide additional services based on demand. So, you know, we have a lot of kids that are dealing with some mental health issues right now, especially with the pandemic and kind of going through all those kind of things. We could eventually provide those types of services to help those kids as well.
Any other questions? All right. With that, we need a motion to award the medical clinic bid to Mercy Clinic East Communities as presented. Second. Any other discussion? All is in favor? Say aye. Aye. All is opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Up next, Frontier Middle School Site Package Two.
Change order, change order two for the Frontier Middle Site Package is a credit of eighty-six thousand nineteen dollars. That is returning the unused contingency back to the district.
All right. We need a motion to approve the Frontier Middle School Site Package Change Order Two as presented. Second. Any other discussion? All is in favor? Say aye. 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 All is opposed? Nay. Motion carries. New Middle School, Change Order Four.
Change Order Four in the amount of one thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents reflects the cost to add some structural steel outside the multipurpose room at the canopy. The structural steel was omitted from the drawings.
Any questions? All right.
I, I have a question. Does, does our architect and engineer have air and emissions insurance?
Yes, they do.
Why are they not using it? I mean, we're already on the high school, over two hundred thousand dollars over our contingency fund that was already set up for two hundred and fifty thousand. And that project's not done and it's, it's closed, but there's going to be a lot more, I'm guessing. And now we're starting this all over with this middle school. Why wouldn't they use their air and emissions insurance as opposed to us constantly paying these change orders for stuff they're leaving off their design?
In construction, you expect a certain amount of change orders. And that varies, but typically you can expect up to five percent. Nowhere in any of these projects are we even close to that. You mentioned the high school. We're still under one percent with everything we've done. So air, air, it would not be an errors and emissions insurance claim. It's within, it's within reason and to be expected.
So I guess where I'm going with this is I think a lot of this, and I've said it before, and I'm going to keep saying it until it hits tread here, but if we sent this out to design build, we would not, the, a design build team will back up their design. And if it's, they're giving you a finished product. And if that product is missing something, they cover it and they fix it and they make it right. And when, for instance, for that vapor barrier we paid for the high school, that went out to bid, or that did not go out to bid, and we ended up paying three times the amount. We could have paid for that if it would have went out to bid. So we're paying more for this stuff in the long run. You know, you say, okay, well, we, we'd have to pay for it no matter what. Yes, we do have to pay for it, but we're paying a lot more than what we would if it would have been a part of the bid process. So, once again, I think we should use design build on all of our projects. I think it would avoid a lot of this. I know it would avoid a lot of this.
Who, my question would be, who, who decided the need here on this and was this a plan approved by the city?
The plan was approved by the city. The steel was left off of the structural steel drawings.
I'm sorry. Say again if you would, please.
You had asked if the city had approved the plans. Yes, they have, but they, they do not look for items like this. This was steel that is necessary for the support of the canopy. However, it was not on the drawings.
Who, who picked up on the mistake?
I believe it started with the contractor. There, there was obviously something missing. We had the structural steel engineer come out and review it and indeed additional support was needed.
And does the architect and engineer get an additional amount every time this contract price goes up?
Their fee is based on construction cost, yes.
Any other questions? With that, we need a motion to approve the new middle school change order four as presented. Motion. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Say aye. Aye. All is opposed? Nay. Director Garber, was that nay?
Yes, that was a nay.
All right. Motion carries, four to three. New Middle School, Change Order Five.
Change Order Five in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents reflects the cost to relocate the iWash stations and provide additional vent piping and provide casework modifications. Also to relocate an electrical panel to a more easily serviced location.
Any questions?
Why, why are we moving that iWash stations?
It was shown on the plumbing drawings in one location. It was shown on the architectural drawings in a different location. This was not discovered till the casework had been released for fabric, fabrication and the conflict was discovered in the field. So we have to move those iWash stations and modify the casework to accept additional vent piping plus provide additional vent piping.
So what, what, whose designer are we going off of when we move them?
The architectural.
All right. With that, we need a motion to approve the new middle school change order five as presented. Some of them. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Say aye. 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 All is opposed? Nay. Motion carries, four to three. New Middle School, Change Order Six.
Change Order Six in the amount of fifty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents reflects the cost to address poor soils at the retaining wall at one of the detention basins. At the direction of the soils engineer, we need to add twelve inches of compacted fill underneath the retaining wall and also provide twenty-four inches deep riprap on the slope above the retaining wall to establish slope stability.
Any questions? All right. With that, we would need a motion to approve the new middle school change order six as presented. Second. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Say aye. 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 All is opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Director Bryce, were you, were you nay or yea? Aye, okay. Motion carries, five to two. North Point High School, Change Order Twenty-Nine.
Change Order Twenty-Nine in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-two cents reflects the cost to provide plenum rated condensate pumps at Fan Control Units thirteen, sixteen, and seventeen. These became necessary. There was a conflict above ceiling to where we could not drain these FCUs properly due to a conflict with the steel beam. So now we have to pump this up and over to get it to drain.
Any questions on this one? All right. With that, we need a motion to approve the North Point High School Change Order Twenty-Nine as presented.
Some move.
Second. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Nay. Nay. Motion carries, four to three. North Point High School, Change Order Thirty.
Change Order Thirty in the amount of seventy-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents reflects the cost to upgrade the fax room. Couple of years ago, here at Holt, we upgraded the fax room to basically a, a pre-culinary type room, more commercial grade equipment and a commercial setting. Teaching and learning has asked us to look into doing this at the new high school and this would be the cost to do that.
Any questions?
I'd like to ask if there could be, so, I'd like to be able to hear you a lot better. There isn't anybody standing around you. Is there any possibility you could take your mask off? So I could hear you better?
I will, I will speak up.
No.
I will speak up. Can you hear me? Okay.
Any questions on the item?
Do you have a motion in a second on this?
Not yet, no.
We just asked for questions, so. We do not have a motion, a motion yet.
Do, do we send this out for bid?
We had the contractor pricing.
The one that's already on the job? We have the price from them and that was it?
Yes.
What, would it be possible to add this? Um, at the end of the project?
It can be done after the fact, but it will be more expensive. I want to say to do the fax room in this building after the fact, I want to say it was close to four hundred thousand dollars. So doing it at this time would be the most cost-effective way to do it.
Question, if I could?
Yes, Director Shaper.
How was this design changed? How did it come about?
We met with, or Megan, do you want to?
I can speak to that. So as we had mentioned before, we have a group of teachers who are working on the design in terms of classroom furniture design for North Point. In that process, we were made aware that the changes and upgrades we've made at Holt, as well as what we planned to upgrade at Timberland, were not included in the plans because we used the kind of the base model of what we set up at Liberty for North Point. So we met with John and outlined what were the differences between our upgrade at Holt and what Liberty had. And these were the differences. And like, like John had mentioned, it's mostly focused on that culinary aspect of that restaurant-grade equipment for our students. And it was easier to make this change now than to wait and then apply for a grant and make such a huge change later.
So is the, is the contractor doing the work buying the dishwasher and the oven?
Yes.
And what kind of markup are they putting on something we can buy as a school district? Why not have them roughen the piping that we need for this and the electric, assuming, or gas that we need to have this work done and then we go out and buy our own oven, dishwasher, I'm sure at a better rate?
These were the changes requested. We put it into one package. We could possibly pull the equipment out and just bid the rough ends. Then we'd have to add installation to the equipment.
I would like to see that happen.
If I could, I, I kind of go to that. Is, is this going to take any different, as far as any different sized piping or any heavier wire for the, is it an electric or a gas oven and?
Yes, and those changes are included in this price.
So I guess, and, and they're, all they're doing is I, I think I hear what Director Bryce is saying. It's going to be there anyway to service it. All we have to do is figure out how we can buy the dishwasher and the, the oven and make sure it's sized properly to service these items that were put in place.
Was there any rough in before on the print?
Yes, but it was for residential grade equipment and this equipment i- is a lot more heavy duty. They do require more wiring, bigger line sizes.
So it is a electric?
Yes, their electric's part of this, yes. We're going from basically a residential under the counter dishwasher that you would have in your kitchen to a commercial grade, uh, super high temperature dishwasher. So we got to increase water temperatures, increase line sizes, items like that.
Well, I would ask that the contractors just rough in and then we supply our own ovens and dishwashers. And it's going to save us money.
I think that would have to be reflected in a motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to change order thirty to, I guess, send it out for rebid to find out how much it's going to cost for the rough in of these utilities and leave out the purchasing and hooking up of the utilities that we're very capable of doing ourselves.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second? So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
It's noticeable that we're already over what, what I bid was initially, like a significant amount. Our original contract was seventy-four million. And we are already seven, over seventy-five million.
Casey, can we do a roll call though? Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Any issue with, with this, um, pausing on this? Actually, it's depending on what happens with the motion. Overall, turning over of the building? I know it's January, but any, any concerns in terms of what that could mean?
They do need to get started on the rough ends as soon as possible. Mr. Angeline, did you have something?
Uh, I did not hear the question, was the question, are we over budget on the school, was that the question? Uh, actually, we are over the construction contingency, but we are not over the dollars that we had budgeted to build this building.
The contract says seventy-four, six, one, seventy-four million, six hundred and thirteen, we're already at seventy-five, one twenty-one. That is over.
That is the construction budget, we actually have in our actual building budget another little over a million dollars beyond that. This is a contracted budget with the builder.
Okay, needs to be on here, apparently. I mean, I wouldn't have known that. Would I?
No, no, you would not have known that, what we show on here are the uh construction contingencies. We have uh our own budgets which are approved by this, this board uh for the amount that we can put towards the uh, the buildings. And that is limited to the amount that was passed by the bonds. We still have the available bond money. Uh, and actually, on this particular project, we are estimated to be one million, three hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars under budget. We track it as tight as we can on exactly where we expect to be. And uh, yes, we have money in our budget, what we, what we show you here is what we have contracted them with, and in that contract, there's a contingency that all contracts have in construction that allow you the ability for things such as errors which we know that that happened. Uh, it would not be in the school's best interest to not have a contingency higher than the construction contingency when we put a budget together for the school.
Alright, Casey, can you read the motion just one more time before we vote?
Director Bryce made a motion to send the fax rooms upgrades out for rebid to see how much it would cost for rough ends, and then the district buying slash installing the equipment itself. Director Shaper seconded.
Can we do a roll call though? Yes. Director Bryce.
Aye.
Director Abbott.
Nay.
And Director Garber.
Aye.
Secretary Buchanan.
Nay.
Director Shaper.
Aye.
Vice President Dewis.
Nay.
And President Bates.
Nay.
And motion did not carry. Do we have an, a new motion? So I would make a motion to approve the North Point High School change order thirty as presented. Do we have a second? Any discussion on that motion? Alright, let's do a roll call vote on that one, since we did the first one, Casey. Okay, Director Bryce.
Nay.
Director Abbott.
Aye.
Director Garber.
Nay.
Secretary Buchanan.
Aye.
Director Shaper.
Nay.
Vice President Dewis.
Aye.
And President Bates.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Alright, next up is old business, first is the middle, new middle school commissioning agent brought forward from last month.
So actually, before you jump in, Mr. Blanton, um, I did visit with uh the city administrator uh specifically relating to this. Uh, Mr. Blanton has provided um, uh, not only a copy of the code, but also a copy of um, an email from the city itself confirming what in fact needs to be done. So with that, if there's anything else that you want to add, Mr. Blanton?
No, nothing's changed from last month, other than that we did reconfirm that.
With that, we need a motion to approve the new middle school commissioning agent as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion or questions?
Yes. As I looked at the documents that were attached, it indicated that this was primarily an issue that was passed in the city of Wentzville from twenty fifteen.
It was a
Here it is twenty twenty-one. But I haven't seen that we've done this before, and in the previous meetings and conversations that we have had, we have asked about
We
I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is the twenty fifteen code, however, I believe it was adopted, uh, it wasn't adopted till recently. The first project that we built under the new code was Journey Elementary, and it was required at Journey. So this, everything from Journey on of a certain size will require commissioning.
But we, you said that anything from Journey on, did we have one in a commissioning agi- I don't remember seeing this before.
Yes, we have one at Journey.
We had a commissioning agent on Journey.
That is correct.
But this is the one that we put on hold?
Yes.
Would we not have done that before? Because that was kind of something that we thought initially, was this a, was this something that a general contractor should have been responsible for? Because we're looking at a significant amount of additional monies.
No, this is something outside of a general contractor's responsibility, and this will be actually our third project. Uh, we also have a commissioning agent on the high school. We will also need commissioning agents on the three uh middle schools that uh we're adding on to.
But we were never asked to add that on to any of the, like, to the uh high school, so
Yes, it went before
Was that, I mean, I don't remember that we've ever had this discussion before about asking for an additional amount for a commissioning agent. Because we all ask, I know I myself ask, what is a commissioning agent? Mr. Ri- Director Bryce asked, isn't that something that's also covered by the general contractor or the architect? We've asked these questions.
That is not
And that's because I hadn't seen it before.
The commissioning agent for Journey Elementary did come before the board, as did the high school, just like this one. And no, this is something that's outside of the general contractor or the architect's scope of work.
Mr. Blanton, you provided us with um the projects and the amount of money in some form, because I remember looking at it, what schools were done before, and the amounts, right?
Correct.
If I could please? I can kind of question this when this all started here a little bit. And the city uh, city building official, uh, Mrs. Isaac, had mentioned that the city had uh not required this of some other larger buildings within the city. Since that she has taken water a little bit and said, well, she doesn't really require, but it's became part of the building code. Um, Dr. Kane, when we paid the city of Wentzville for building permits, uh, I'm sure you're aware, we put on there that uh, I believe the terminology is uh, we do not owe, or we should not pay, when, or we pay under protest, or we, basically that we don't know it. I, I still would have contention with this, I, I mean, if that's our stand, I, I think we ought to stand on this. This is a layer that the city is requiring that should not be necessary. This process, we done paid him a hundred and twenty-five thousand, was a hundred, a hundred thousand, I believe this cost us on the high school and about twenty-five thousand, I, I don't know if we, yes, Journey was in there too, as I look back and if we feel that the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not fair on the building permits, then why would we feel that this is fair, and I think we ought to question this. I mean, this is not needed till a year from now, would I be correct in saying, if not longer?
Commissioning agent works along with us, that's why, we, we delayed it last month, but we need to get him on board. He reviews all equipment submittals, uh, and does a lot of uh work throughout the project.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear a word you said.
It's time to bring the commissioning agent on board, uh, their work, they actually work throughout the project with us.
And once again, I think we have seven layers, I believe, I believe even the, the state fire marshals uh would come down and, and do this for the school district for nothing, possibly, what I'd been told, you know?
Mr. Mr. Blanton, actually, I do want to answer Director Shaper's uh question. I think the permit fees, and that's a separate conversation, I think it's a separate and distinct conversation from this code piece. Um, that's pretty clear, no, is clear in terms of what we need to do. If we want to have a permit fee conversation, as I've said before, there's a time and a place for it. I just don't think this is the time and place where we need to figure out what we want to do as a district as relates to permit fees.
We've never initia- we've talked about this, and I've seen this on there for two years now that we put, we put this um I guess, we declare that we feel it's unfair for them to charge us and uh you, but yet we uh, we haven't did none of it. What, what, what's the process? If we, if we feel that we do not owe, why we keep paying? I- if we feel this needs to be uh have legal action? Then is that what's, what we should do, I, I, I mean, just to um I mean, between the three buildings, Journey, the high school, and this, is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Not counting the million and five of what we paid the city in permits. And then for somebody to say, well, we don't require, but it's, it's in the building code, so you have to do it, I I would question this.
We have to, we have to follow the building code, period.
Alright, any other questions?
I found the information about what we spent previously. Journey Elementary School was forty-five thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, and North Point High School was one hundred, two thousand, three hundred dollars.
And that was the commissioning agent fee, is that what you're referencing?
It is forty-five thousand, one hundred fifty dollars for Journey, and one hundred, two thousand, three hundred dollars for North Point.
Alright. No working. Alright, we'll go ahead with the vote, all of us in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Can I get a quick show of hands on I, the voice is kind of blurred for me, I couldn't tell what we had, all those in favor, aye, raise your hand. Nay, raise your hand.
What's that, nays?
Motion carries, four, three, I apologize, the voice is mixed. Alright, next up are twenty twenty-one board commitments, and again, we met, um, the board met for a workshop last month just to, or it was earlier this month, it was this month. Um, just to speak about some different pieces procedurally, and one of the pieces that we needed to talk about was refreshing our board commitments. Um, I think that we did add a small change in addition to, just procedurally for ourselves, um, to asking, make sure we're asking questions in a timely manner, that if we have any items we want to pull from consent, we would also like to make sure that's done um in advance of the meeting as well, just so that our meetings can run more efficiently. Are there any other questions or comments as it relates to the board commitments before we approve those officially with the changes?
Yes. I'd actually sent an email to Casey and ask her about, or talk to her about a change that I would like to see. And that is, uh, but I was told that I, I'm sorry.
That was the policy? The next item? This is the board commitments that we're talking about first.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I do have a comment about this one as well.
Okay.
And that is I'm sorry, maybe I've got this confused, but policy two, four, one, two, okay, it is relative to policy, go ahead. So, I still have an issue, however, with that. Let me pull it up.
Well, she's looking for that, did anybody else have any other questions on that?
I'm sorry. This was something that came up when we had a conversation with Kelly from the, from the state board, Kelly Hopkins. When we had a discussion about these commitments, and one of the things that we had talked about was that number seven item on there. And again, at the time of we, that we had our, that we did have our open session and our workshop, I did make a comment about the fact that if you have any, if you do have any questions, and this is per our attorney, if you do have any questions, you certainly have the right to ask the questions. It looks like it's a little bit more constructive when you say we have to have, we have to have our uh, questions in forty-eight hours in advance of a, of a school meeting, and yet today, or yesterday, we did have, and I guess there was, there's probably in, a guideline for that, but I think we had, what, six or seven addendums? The day before? You just posted addendums on Wednesday. Right. So if we had a question next
For consent, there was one addendum item, not six or seven. There, in total, in the totality to the packet, um, that is correct. But as, as we, you and I have spoken before, this is not something that is meant to restrict any questions being asked whatsoever. It's just for simply procedural, to try to streamline, so you guys can get the questions ahead of time in, so the cabinet can prepare, you know, best answers for you guys, and you're more than welcome to pull the agenda item into new business and ask the questions during the meeting.
Yeah, I think we were just trying to, you know, as cons- as the name consent construes that it is approved with consent, and we know that there may be occasionally items such as a relational um item that needs to be pulled, or maybe something that requires further discussion, and so we're just asking that those be pulled in advance, so that when we get to consent, um, we can approve those swiftly and move on to the rest of our business. And I think, just as we've seen in, in new business and old business, there's definitely, you know, I've stopped and made an intentional effort to make sure we have an opportunity for questions, but really just trying to streamline that consent agenda and approval of that.
As long as I believe in my heart of hearts that this is something, again, that if you don't think of the question before forty-eight hours, this is not something that I would think would restrict any board member. I think that, as I said, Kelly Hopkins even made a mention, made mention of this, didn't think it was probably something that would be um, more appropriate for a board commitment. I understand the value of making a, 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 a meeting that will go smoothly, but I do think that, I think that's a little restrictive, and I don't think it should be for a board member.
Yeah, and I would say that is our guideline and something that we're hoping that, you know, that we're all committing to, to working towards and making sure and get this in, but, I mean, I think Dr. Kane can attest that if someone does have a question, you know, the day of the meeting, they're gonna be more than happy to, to work with us and answer um any call or question that we might have. they're gonna be more than happy to, to work with us and answer, um, any call or question that we might have.
Um, I can remember a couple of times when I was stopped by yourself in telling me that I, I had forty-eight hours to ask these questions. Again, I would not like to see this in there.
Do we have a motion?
Like to make a motion to leave that particular one out, quite honestly.
I'll second that motion.
Wha- what is the motion?
The motion is to leave out item number seven. I also find this offensive when it says that we're going to assume the responsibility of reading our board packet. I've mentioned this in closed session before and other, and even at that. Why would you get on the board and not read your board packet?
It's just commitments that we're making, you know, to one another and ourselves that we're gonna, you know, conduct our, it's kind of like our rules of engagement for the board, um, and how we want to operate and, and process things procedurally for ourselves. It's not to, it's not to be restrictive, it's really just to be an aid and to help us, you know, run our meetings efficiently and, and make sure we, we're able to get through everything. All right, so we have a motion, and then you seconded that, Dan? Any other discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All is opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion fails. Is there another motion to be made? Second. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All is opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries four to three. Next up is policy revision. Also at our workshop, we had some discussion around public forum and working to make that more accommodating for our stakeholders. Mr. Schulte was so kind to take that back and put some language around that for us to evaluate and vote on tonight. Any questions or comments on, on that piece?
This is the one that I had- This is the one that I had sent to Casey. There is a phrase in here that says, I strongly, um, I'm sorry, if a number of speakers wish to speak on the same topic, the group shall select a spokesperson, spokesperson to present that information. I would like that wording changed. I strongly would suggest that this would be not the word "shall" at all, but it should be something to the effect of, if, if possible, it is strongly recommended that if you do have more than one speaker on a particular subject, that, that they should be able to speak, that, that shouldn't be the word "shall." You might be talking about the same subject, but you might have an altogether different idea or comment about it. And you may not even know, we did talk about this in the workshop, you may not even know the person who is going to make a conversa- uh, topic, a conversation on that topic, and you may not even know them. You don't even know what they might be thinking about it. But it would still classify as the topic.
Who was that? Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see you over there. Mr. Schulte?
Um, I would like to suggest that we replace the word "shall" with "may." And that would provide that group of individuals the opportunity to decide if they would like to come together and have a spokesperson, or they could all choose to speak on behalf of themselves.
I agree with that. Thank you.
We did discuss that specifically during the workshop. I remember talking about it. Yeah, I think we just got Steven taking it out, that number out, but decided to leave it in.
This would provide some flexibility if, if they would like to do that. And at the same time, it would still allow for the maximum of ten speakers, up to three minutes apiece.
Would somebody like to make a motion with that amendment? Oh, okay. 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 Sorry, I'm sorry. So then we would need a motion to approve the resi- revisions to policy zero, four, one, two, as amended, amending that word "shall" to be replaced with "may."
So moved.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Before we adjourn, we do have one more item not on the agenda, and it is a recognition. And I will turn it over to Dr. Kane.
We technically do have recognition on the, um, agenda, but, Mrs. LaPac? Uh, this, I will just read as, uh, presented here. It says, honoring and saluting Mary Kay LaPac, Chief Communications Officer, in recognition of eleven years of extra nor- extra or- extraordinary service and dedication to the students and staff of the Wentzville School District. Mary, we wish you all the best in the future and, um, just want to thank you for everything that you have done, um, for the entirety of the Wentzville School District community. Congratulations to you.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, Mary?
I will, I just, I would like to say what a pleasure and an honor it's been to tell the story of what, uh, our educators are doing in this district, have done and continue to do with the challenges that they face. So I'm, I'm gonna miss everyone very much. It's a great team.
All right, with that, we need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, nay? Motion-